Almighty God, give your love and justice to those who administer our city. Help them to govern with wisdom and compassion so that the poor and powerless are treated fairly and with justice. Open their ears to the cries for help from those caught in cycles of poverty, abuse, or violence, and give them your wisdom to know how best to respond and the courage to do the right thing, even if it's not the popular thing. Under their guidance, may our people flourish, and may there be lasting peace and plenty for all. This we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doug. Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, October 19th, 2020, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Hager.
Here.
Flomie.
Here.
Rupher.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Yes.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, for any updates or changes to the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Your Honor members. Good evening. I am going to add one item under J. Board Committee and Department Reports. I just want to give a brief update from the Tax Levy Committee and the work that they've been doing.
Thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion approving the amended agenda.
So moves.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Caroline. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. That motion carries. Under public hearings, we have one public hearing this evening, and it's a business subsidy hearing for Companion Health Properties LLC. And Clara, I will call on our community development manager, Clara Beck, to introduce this before we open the public hearing. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, this is a public hearing for a business subsidy for Companion Health Properties LLC. This is a new LLC being formed to open a new vet clinic in town. Dr. Thea Fransen is the one who will be opening it. She currently operates Companion Animal Hospital. This will be an expansion of that business. She will be hiring one more vet. This proposal has already gone in front of Business Development for Fergus Falls, and they have passed it, so they have agreed to expend the $200,000 loan toward Thea's business. West Central Initiative is also a lender on the loan and/or on their own loan, and they have already heard it in front of their board and approved it. So all that remains is for the bank to come through with their financing for the project. So we are, based on business subsidy laws, since it's a request over $150,000, we have to have a public hearing on it, which is why we are here this evening. If anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Clara. If there's any questions of Clara, you ask them now. If not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. So right now, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please step to the lectern, state your name and your address.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Annie Decker, Greater Fergus Falls, 403 South Union. I'm just here to speak in support of Thea's project. She's been a pleasure to work with, and this is a perfect example of a project where using GAAP financing from BDFF and West Central truly makes a project come to fruition. For those of you who might not be aware, a lot of times with projects of this size, banks can only finance a certain amount, so being able to utilize both the city program and West Central's really is a good example of a true partnership to make something like this work. So this will take a piece of property, a vacant piece of land, and build a new building and add some new jobs in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and it's back to the council. We need a resolution.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I would just note, too, if the council's Dr. Thea Fransen is in the audience this evening, if anyone has any questions for her, she's, you know, more than willing to answer those, but seeing no questions, we have a resolution in a second. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Flomie.
Yes.
Rupher.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no awards, bids to award this evening. Under petitions and communications, we're fortunate this evening to have Rebecca Lynn Peterson with us to give us an update on West Central Initiative. Good evening, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members, city staff, and what an historic moment to be here when you made that resolution. I brought a video tonight that I'd like to share with you. It's a video we put together of our work just down the road in Pelican Rapids, where all of the West Central Initiative programs are in high action right now. So I wanted to show you what we have going on and what the possibilities are. I also wanted to introduce you through this video to some of my other colleagues, so it's not just me in the room. And then I'd just like to make a few comments after the video, so.
Battle Lake is a perfect example of the broad spectrum of work that we do in West Central Minnesota, and each of the examples is a picture into what is possible in your community.
West Central Initiative offers a variety of different planning services. One of the things that we do is Safe Roads to School Plans, and the Safe Roads plans involve what we call the five E's. That's engineering, encouragement, enforcement, evaluation, and education. The planning assistance dollars are available basically every fall to communities that are interested in doing a plan. That program is still available to other communities that are interested in applying for planning dollars.
One of the really unique things about West Central Initiative, we have several grant-making tools that are designed to help communities. The Childcare Capacity Grant is just one of those grant-making tools specifically designed to provide support to communities who are struggling with childcare needs and really have a plan for starting a childcare center in their community.
Through our planning grant program, we recently worked with the city of Battle Lake for them to hire University of Minnesota Extension to conduct a business retention and expansion program within the city that helped them understand the business needs better in the community. A question that's often asked is what is GAAP financing? In our case, GAAP financing is when a bank is not able to lend the total amount needed for a project, and once you factor in the owner's equity share, there's still an amount needed for the project to get done, and that's where West Central Initiative steps in with our GAAP programs. Another one of West Central Initiative's loan programs is the Small Enterprise Loan Fund, which are often referred to as microloans. They're smaller loans that do not require a lead bank to provide financing, and we can provide loans for retail sales, service establishments, operating capital, and equipment purchases. West Central Initiative also works with its communities by providing direct technical assistance. We worked with the city of Battle Lake while they were trying to reestablish their Economic Development Authority and attended meetings and helped provide outside planning perspective while they undertook that process to reestablish their EDA.
West Central Initiative's Live Wide Open Program embraces all that we love about the nine counties of West Central Minnesota. It features stories and resources for people looking to move here, stories of people who have moved here. West Central Initiative, along with several partners in the region, hope that Live Wide Open can stimulate discussions to find out more about living in West Central Minnesota. West Central Initiative hosts many community funds, including Battle Lake. A lot of the work that we do with our community funds varies from community to community. So I think one of the roles we play is in that encouragement piece, in the connectivity piece.
What would the community be like without West Central Initiative? And I'd have to say it'd be very different. West Central Initiative, people are always available, whatever project we're thinking about, working on. We just give them a call, and somebody comes over and helps us out.
Donor advised funds are the coolest thing. You can set up a family foundation with West Central Initiative, and we call this a donor advised fund, but oftentimes, it's like a family foundation.
The donor advised fund was just a way for us to give away a lot of money right now and make sure that it's just directed to those causes in our communities. West Central Initiative was supportive, so the flexibility is just, I just can't say enough about it.
The relief fund was established by the DNR 60 years ago to raise wall eyes. It didn't hold water, so they closed it up, and for many years, it's been sitting empty. Trees have been growing up in the middle of it, yet the burns have been maintained by the local users to use as walking trails. At West Central Initiative, we love this project. It's one of those examples where a group of people, a community, came together over a project that they were passionate about. We wanted to make sure that, in fact, it stayed open to the public and in conservation status forever.
We hope that you'll be inspired to think about how your community can come together to shape the future that they want.
Well, thank you for indulging me. When we showed this video to Network Battle Lake and Rick Share asked the question, did anyone here learn something they didn't know about West Central Initiative? Everyone raised their hand. So I think people know us for one thing or another, but that's kind of a encapsulated version. So I want to thank you all for your past support, your continued support, the work that you do, and I wanted to give you a little bit of an update since I visited with you last year at 7:00 a.m. at one of your committee of the whole meeting. So it's really great to be here tonight. Last year, I introduced our new strategic plan. You might recognize this. We continue to work through this plan, and now even more so is it relevant than when I presented it to you last year. We also put in front of you our writing a new story. Last year at our annual meeting, we adopted the theme of telling our story, and little did we know that writing a new story was on the horizon. We had our annual meeting last week, and Kevin Kling came and did some work with us on storytelling. Some of us were there, some of you were there. And then February came along, and we started recognizing that it was time to switch up our grant program, switch up our loan program, and in March, when the pandemic hit, we reacted quickly. We had the flexibility to do this. One of the first needs that we discovered was the childcare industry, and so our ECI coordinators and our early childhood people were able to make about $350,000 in grants to the early childhood programs around the region. Twenty-nine of those were made right here in Fergus Falls for a total of $31,000. There was one center-based childcare center and then home-based centers. They also realized that people needed more than just money. They were running short on sanitation equipments, hand sanitizer and bleach, so they were able to get that into all of our childcare providers hands across the region, and they continue to do that. When we were looking at our changemaker grants, we thought we had to put that on hold for a while and do something to address the immediate need, so we created the Resiliency Fund, and out of that fund, we made over $450,000 in grants across the region, $57,595 right here in Fergus Falls. In June, we put that program on pause because we knew that there would be great need coming forward. We opened up that program again on November 14th, so people can apply. We're basically focusing on sustainability, diversity, equity, and inclusion through a participatory grant-making process. Thank goodness I don't have my mask on, I can't say that word with my mask on. And so we're working with peer partners to identify need and make these grants accessible to all. Again, thank you for your ongoing support. I did have my colleagues run some numbers for me, and in the last three years, West Central Initiative has made over $2 million in grants and loans to the Fergus Falls area. That's through our own programs and through the other programs that we run. So you've been supporting us for years. I hope you can see the return on investment, and we hope to do more in our communities. We just hired two new planners through an EDA grant, Emily Reno and Alexander Larson, just our graduates from the U of M Humphrey Institute, and they've hit the ground running. So be looking for more from them. And finally, an invitation to attend our annual meeting this year. It will be virtual. If you haven't gotten an invitation already, you will. Kevin Kling will be back hosting the event. We'll have a special guest with Will Steger. He's going to be talking about climate change, and we're going to have some music provided by Chuck Suki, and we're going to talk about some issues that we're addressing through our work and others throughout the region. So if you have any questions.
November 4th, that is.
Yeah, and what did I say?
You didn't give a date.
Oh, November 4th. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Oh, and on behalf of our veterinarian clinic in the room, because we realized some of the things that have gotten us through this pandemic are our pets, and because we can control the mute, you're invited to bring your pets. And we'll even invite them to participate occasionally throughout the evening, so it'll be a fun event.
Fun. Thank you so much, Rebecca.
Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Rebecca? Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks for everything that you and West Central do, Rebecca. We really appreciate that.
I have an expert if anybody wants this.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. There's five items. They're listed, and you pack it as well as on the board. If anyone wants any of those removed for individual discussion, we can do that at this time. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution to pass the Consent Agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Flomie. Yes.
Rupher.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolution tonight, we have one ordinance and one resolution. First item is a second reading of ordinance 8, eighth series, amending the zoning of the Port Authority-owned property from RA to I-2. This has been due committee. It's been introduced. If there's any questions, I'll direct them to our city attorney. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Flomie.
Yes.
Rupher.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Item number two is a resolution declaring the 2020 Over the River Festival as a community event, and I will call on Nataya Bowman's with us this evening to tell us a little bit about some of the changes that are planned. Good evening, Nataya.
Good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. Again, my name is Nataya Bowman, and tonight I'm representing the Downtown Riverfront Council's Over the River Holiday Festival Planning Committee. It's a long name. As many of you know, this has become a welcomed community-wide event that not only supports our downtown businesses and artists, but also provides an opportunity to celebrate community. And although we are in the midst of a pandemic, we feel that we can provide a safe and cheerful event. So to accommodate safety guidelines, the agenda would be slightly modified, but will include crowd favorites such as the Santa Fly-In at the airport and a fireworks display. However, we are proposing that we relocate the fireworks display from Wright Park to the RTC grounds to accommodate social distancing. As we've done over the last four years, the planning committee has requested city support by way of declaring this holiday festival as a community event, waiving the fees associated with the special event permit and providing a $1,500 sponsorship for the fireworks display, which has quickly become the highlight of that event. So if approved, the city of Fergus Falls would once again be recognized as a platinum sponsor of the fireworks display. In the few years that we've been coordinating this event, we've managed to attract hundreds to our downtown by day and thousands by night specifically for the fireworks display. More than ever, we feel that we need to support our local businesses and come together to celebrate community. We believe that Over the River Holiday Festival is an event that will do just that. So on behalf of the entire planning committee, I thank you for the opportunity to present, and I'm grateful for your consideration. If you have any specific questions about the agenda that is still being worked out, but I could answer any of those questions about the logistics if there are any.
Thanks, Nataya. I just would say hats off to you and your committee for being flexible and recognizing the importance of this event and finding a way to do it, and I just, for the conversations we've had, some of the events that you're planning and the partnerships that you've developed, it sounds like it's going to be a great event again, so happy to have the community support behind that. If anyone has any questions, we could ask Nataya. Otherwise, we could offer, someone like to offer the resolution?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Anthony.
Nataya, thank you.
Roll call, please. Thanks, Nataya.
Hicks. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Flomie.
Yes.
Rupher.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Essison.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $2,103,024, and if there's any questions, we will direct them to our finance director. Scott, we've got continuing education from Scott Quamie ongoing.
I'll offer the resolution. I have a question.
Got it. Thanks, Scott. Someone like to second that? Jim, go ahead. Scott.
Among the items that are listed in the capital improvement budget is an expense of $1,915,20 for sidewalk repair, sidewalk building. Happens to be at my house, and so I just wanted to make that known, for one thing. And then I thought it opened up the conversation, so to speak, for what the sidewalk program involves.
Sure.
Roughly about $30,000 of city budget money is put toward the sidewalk program, and for those who might be interested in the community that are wanting to know more about this, maybe Bill could give us just a little bit of a heads up on how to step into that.
Yeah, so we have a sidewalk program here at the city, and Brian, you can step in and correct me along the way, too, but we have a contractor each year that does our sidewalk improvements, and we, of course, do those improvements to city-owned sidewalks. That would be, you know, our responsibility. And then also, if residents have their sidewalks that need some improvements, they can petition for that. It would be 100% petition then because it's just that one resident. And then they pay for that portion of it. Now, I know it's, and I don't have any of this in front of me, but it's kind of a sliding scale based on dollar amounts, so if you are in this one tier, you know, you maybe pay for it right now if it's just a couple hundred dollars. Gets a little more expensive, you can pay for that over five years or over 10 years, depending on the amount. And we could come back and explain that program in a little bit more detail, but I think we bring that contractor to you each year as far as for your approval of who is going to do that, and then, you know, residents can certainly alert the engineering department where those needs are. Troy Haughey in our engineering department handles that program, does an excellent job with that. We've been levying $30,000 each year for this program, and that combined then what the residents would pay for their portion of that, funds that program each year. So it's been a very successful program throughout the years. Anything I should add, Brian, that I'm forgetting?
Oh, I think you pretty much covered something at all. I mean, we can certainly come back to the next committee meeting and just give you a little bit more detailed information in regards to the program.
The only comment I would make is, in fact, Troy is a good guy to work with, and as far as how the process worked, what my experience was, you don't come today and expect the sidewalk to be fixed tomorrow. I talked to Troy last summer and asked him to come out and take a look at what was a bad tripping hazard situation. He looked at it and said, I think this is something that we'll put on our list for next year's activity, and that's exactly how it happened. So asked about it last summer, got the work done this summer, and then how it breaks down cost-wise, you know, there's the whole plan for that, that I think it wouldn't hurt for us to see that in the form of a presentation at some meeting in the future, so that as people hear it, they can understand how it works out. That's all I've got for it.
Certainly, and I think that's a good idea, Scott. Thank you for bringing it. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Brian. Yeah, good idea, Scott. We have a resolution in a second. We need a roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Flomie.
Yes.
Rupher.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under Board Committee and Department Reports, city administrator Andrew Bremseth will give us a brief update on the activities of the Tax Levy Committee.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor members. I understand I'm the only thing standing in the way of you and your evenings, so I'll be quick, but I just wanted to give a quick update from our committee. We've met a lot of times this year between the budget and the CARES funding, and just want to give a few shout-outs to folks, but also talk about what we've been working on. So the resolution of accounts you just approved, as you saw, had over $500,000 of grants to local small businesses and nonprofits in the community. We, a lot of staff members in the committee did a lot of work. Clara Beck, Sandy Cunningham, and Bill Sonmore on the city staff put a ton of time and effort into laying out a really good process, identifying who has need for these funds and identifying eligible uses for those funds, and we're very happy with the results of that process and very pleased to be able to provide this much-needed support to our local businesses and nonprofits. So definitely wanted to call attention to that. Lisa Workman with the chamber also provided great resources for businesses as they were working through those applications and through that process, as it was new for all of us. That extra resource and helping hand was very much appreciated, I know, by a lot of our businesses in the community. So a lot of good things went into that. Very pleased with the results, and also wanted to mention, we were able to give $50,000 to Lake Region Healthcare. As you all know, they've felt the impacts of the pandemic as much, if not more than anyone. They stepped up and have kept our community safe, and just really great to be able to provide and give resources back to the community, especially those that need it the most. So thank you to the staff that worked on that. Thank you, fellow committee members, for making those tough decisions as well. So that's the CARES piece.
Jim, did you have a question on the CARES?
Sure.
I would just like to mention that we actually had room within the city to use that money, but did not, we gave it away to those that really needed it. And I would also like to mention that not every city and every county did that. So Fergus Falls and Otter Tail County are two of those that did use that money to help out within the county and within the city.
Yeah, that's a great point, Councilmember Fish. I agree. The city itself had enough cost or resources tied up into the pandemic, or needs, I should say, that we could have spent the entire amount just within our organization. So we were very fortunate to be able, though, to, like you said, give that away. Not all communities were in that position, and being able to give, I think it was $540,000 was the amount, to businesses and nonprofits, and then additional funds to local daycare and childcare providers was really impactful and meaningful, and I'm glad that we moved in that direction. So thanks for acknowledging that and pointing that out. The other thing I would touch on real quickly is the 2021 budget. We met many, many times, and obviously, like we said at the September meeting when we passed the preliminary levy, that this committee and staff was very dedicated, and I know the council agrees, to getting the 2021 levy to zero. We wanted no impact to the taxpayers, knowing that everybody's been impacted in some way by the pandemic and some certainly more than others. And just wanted to report back tonight that through our work and the work of Councilmember Hicks and the mayor, we've gotten that 2021 budget levy to a point where it's going to be a 0% impact to taxpayers. Now, not everybody will experience the same because if property values fluctuate, you know, the rate that they pay may fluctuate, but the dollar amount that we're collecting, that we're proposing to collect in 2021 as compared to the 2020 levy, will have a $0 impact, and that's, you know, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made to go backwards, so to speak, or to not keep up with inflation on spending. And so, again, a lot of props to folks who made tough decisions and our finance department who continues to bring us through that process and works hard on the budget. So I just wanted to update you all with that. We will be bringing back those additional changes down the road and show you specifically what we're looking at reducing and where that comes into play, but as I was talking about the CARES funding, I just wanted to mention that as well, that that works ongoing, and we're going to get there. We're there, and we're going to continue to even look further, so.
Thank you.
Questions on any of that?
Thank you, Andrew. And also, Bill, I'll just echo, thanks to Anthony, thanks to Bill and to Sandy for your work on that committee. It's, we met a lot and made some tough decisions, but, yeah, Tom?
A quick question, and again, I'll just echo the thanks to the finance department and the Tax Levy Committee and all the staff that were involved, and the council members and the mayor. Now, the, we're not raising the levy over last year, the dollar amount, and doesn't
Yes, the levy amount is a set dollar amount, and again, that's not going to go up in 2021 as compared to 2020. LGA is separate from that, and we are anticipating a cut in LGA based on the state deficit.
So to answer the question, that does factor in those decreased, projected decreases?
It does, yeah. It's all built into a budget where we're projecting a, probably a worst-case scenario and still trying to put, or putting together a budget that would have no impact to the taxpayers. So I'll let Bill fill in the blanks there if you want.
I think, yeah, no, I think that answered the question.